...of September in the fall. I hope the heat's working okay in here. And at least the fans are going, "One more hot day." That's it. One more. So as we always do, I will ask you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then following that, before we open the meeting, we're very honored to have Ron Stoller here from Grace Church to say a few words for us. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on, please.
Well, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this opportunity this evening. And you are the God who appoints leaders to govern our lands at the national level, the local level. And every leader, and every leader tonight, needs wisdom to govern justly. Your word says if any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you. So we ask tonight for just that. Give each person here, each man, each woman on this council, for wisdom to help them to listen well to one another, seek understanding, and arrive at decisions that reflect the best interest for those they represent. Give them discernment when decisions are not clear. Give them deference to respect differing opinions. Give them unity at whatever decisions they are called to make this evening. So bless this meeting. Have your way. And I'd ask you, make it the best this council's ever had. I pray it goes really well for your sake and in your name, Lord Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Great meeting.
Thank you very much.
President Aitken, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bob Horkey.
Here.
Steve Hoover.
Here.
Chuck Lehman.
Here.
Cindy Spoljerick.
Here.
Joe Edwards.
Here.
Jim Ake.
Here.
Thank you. There are no changes to note on the agenda, so with that in mind, we'll proceed and move on to the approval of the amendments. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Move to approve the city council amendments on September 11th as stated.
Thank you. I have a motion by Steve Hoover. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Cindy Spoljerick. Is there any discussion, any additions or changes? Hearing none, please, to approve the minutes as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to claims. Now, some of you have copies before you. I noticed that there were some, you could have a page four or five missing. However, what was posted and what was advertised is correct. And so I would entertain a motion to approve claims as stated. So move. I have a motion by Joe Edwards.
Second.
Second by Bob Horkey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote to approve claims as stated. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Claims stand approved. At this time, there's no miscellaneous business to present, and so we'll move on to old business. Ordinance 17-28, amending traffic regulations of the city of Westfield. We had a council reduction on September 11th, and this is eligible for adoption tonight. I invite Phil Suddenling, if he'd like to make some comments.
Good evening. Phil Suddenling, city engineer for Westfield. Like you said, this was presented, I think, two weeks ago. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain. If you want me to break it down, I certainly could.
Does council have any questions this time?
Can I just note one thing? It'd be nice if we had some, some kind of PR related to the changes, so people know in advance.
A blast-out communications blast?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can work that out. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 17-28, amending our traffic regulations.
All right, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Cindy Spoljerick, seconds. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cindy Spoljerick?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six, zero.
Thank you. All right. The next item under old business is ordinance 1734, the 2018 budget. We had a council introduction on September 11th. And at this time, I'd like to invite Todd Petron to say a few remarks.
Members of council, this is the timeline. I do know we're off by a day here on the 12th and 26th. You did have a public work session last Tuesday in which you heard a pretty in-depth discussion and presentation by Greg Garitas of the Financial Services Group, who's our financial advisor. So in the interest of time and the ability to, I will not go through this presentation. I know this is a public hearing tonight, and I can answer any questions that you may have before you gavel that particular portion of the meeting in. But I will say, part of our update, as I mentioned last time, we are getting some new pricing back from our insurance provider, health insurance provider Anthem. We had a preliminary email from Friday, and we don't have those numbers finalized, but it looks like those, those in fact could be a reduction in our overall annual premium. As I mentioned in your public work session, we're exploring the opportunities for a health, wellness initiative clinic and partnering with not only Hamilton County, but also, I believe, the school corporation and merging and trying to create some scale and mitigate some of our increases. So, and I think we did see some of that build-out at the New River View Hospital a few weeks ago, last week. So with that, any questions from council? And then I can round out the presentation after the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Todd. Any questions for Mr. Petron? All right, thank you, Todd. This does require a public hearing tonight. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing at 7:09. Those who wish to address us on this issue may come forward. Do we have any cards already?
Good evening, council members. My name is Ray Schneider. I live at 4455 Whitney Road in Westfield, Indiana. I'm here to make some comments, questions, on the 2018 budget. And to kind of give you some kind of understanding where I'm coming from, I'm a CPA, have been one for 37 years. I worked for a CPA firm. I've done school audits, city, town, villages, multimillion-dollar corporation audits, taxes, financial planning. When I look at this budget for 2018, I see a lot of pork, fat, over $3 million in this budget. You know, I don't see much detail, you know. And the way you get around the shortfalls or the deficits that you're basically promoting is you, as a city council, a couple of weeks ago, passed the LOIT income tax, where you can take and use local option income tax money to pay for any shortfalls in city expenses, Grand Park, or whatever. And then, basically, your revenues are projected up, too. So to me, you know, there's pork in it, and you can't tell it's not. Last Tuesday, you had a budget workshop. Okay, I attended that. They had their financial consultant, Greg Garitas, come in from Financial Solutions. He talked for an hour and a half, put on a PowerPoint presentation on the screen, which you just kind of keep on rolling through the screens. Nobody had copies of it, maybe other than the council members, you know, and said, "What a fine and dandy job we're doing here," you know. I don't know if I can lend credibility to all those numbers, because I didn't see them, you know, and I'm not going to lay judgment on them. But, like I said, there's fat in this budget. One thing I don't see in this budget, the budget for Grand Park, you know. You know, you talk about, you know, being forthright and up and informing the citizens, you know, which that's not happening, and you know it's not happening. You know, you're talking in salary ordinance, you're looking at hiring another three to four people in Grand Park. And the citizens know that you're charging salaries to the Public Works Department and not the budget. So you're misleading the citizens of this community. You know, when are you and the city going to stand up and tell the citizens of this community the truth? Thank you.
Lyndon Ness, I live at 1122 East 161st Street, speaking on behalf of myself and neighbors, the 161st Street neighbors. We've been through the budget introduction several times that you just had on the screen a minute ago, and we marked some questions, starting on, I think it's the 12th page, where we have this nice pie chart. We circled several things and made several comments. It says here that the public safety is 61% of the operational budget, saying police is 28, and fire is 33. Several people in our group are financial people. I myself have been retired CFO. We looked at the numbers. We went to the back to the budget form, number one, that has been submitted on the DLGF website, and added up all the numbers. And even if we take out the bond numbers that are listed that there specifically for fire, police, and street, and we add it up, we can only find that the public safety, fire, and police are still less than 50% of the budget. And most cities are expending quite a bit more of that for what are considered essential services. If you then look at all these other departments, which were in the green, if you remove streets out of there, and streets also gets money from the MVH, that leaves administrative costs of 32.6%. This is nearly a third of the budget on administrative costs. So if what we have seen on budget form number one is not accurate in those numbers, we would like to know why those numbers are not represented in this pie chart or vice versa, which is actually correct. And if you flip back three more pages in your own budget presentation to the expense change form that is in here, you will note the same things. These numbers are on budget form number one, but they do not add up to 61% in the pie chart. So we'd like an explanation of that, clearly. Is it 61%? Or is it perhaps less than 50 on fire and police? And is streets what we have taken off of budget form one? Do we need this bond number six, this $500,000 place card, in that we had an excess of nearly $486,000 from the COAT bands when it was refinanced? We thought, in reading that bond information, that it said it could not be used for payment of debt or principal, but we noticed that it was put towards the first lease payment. So why do we need another $500,000 on the bond that's being proposed right now? Is there going to be extra money built into that, and where will that money go? We question again the policy. The salary ordinance is coming up tonight for discussion. We question again a policy of where the citizens are paying the 3% contribution so that employees can participate. Other items, since we only have three minutes, we'll put those in a document and forward to you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to speak on this subject?
Logan. Jim Thurston, 755 Race Time Road, speaking on behalf of myself. I was, as I was thinking about the transaction related to Grand Park and the economics that would be going on, we'll be rolling from a lease payment of about 1.9, almost $2 million a year. We then assume it into a loan, take over the loan payment, which is about $1.7 million, $1.8 million. If you refinance that again into the bond, there's going to be, you know, a savings drop into the bottom line, largely driven by the principal, lack principal amortization on the bond. I would like the city to consider, I have not, I apologize, had time to look in detail on the budget as to whether or not this is in there, but to consider entering a defeasance plan for said bonds. I think it's the fiscally responsible thing to do, to enter into such plan, to take that savings that's going to go. We're already on the hook for a lease obligation of $1.7 million, or $1.9 million. That's the commitment we've made already. Take that savings, that cash flow savings, as you roll from the, from the rent to underlying bond obligation, and, and use those proceeds to defuse the debt. Based upon my back-of-the-napkin math, taking that savings, which would be about $1 million a year, I believe, using the 10-year treasury as a benchmark for what the weighted average cost of investments would be, and to put those, that money aside, that would take about 21 years to fully defuse the debt. If you wanted to actually generate some savings and have it be $27 million due in 25 years, you could generate an operating savings, a couple hundred thousand dollars, hire a few more people. Again, I apologize, I don't know what the details are in the budgets, whether or not it's in the plan or not, but I, I just personally believe that, I don't believe Westfield's of the size now, or would be in the future, to be like Indianapolis, where you're, you're still paying for the Hoosier Dome, and it's no longer there, the RCA Dome, whatever future name you want to have for it. Unfortunately, you know, we're blessed to be a growing city, as I believe others have mentioned in the past. It's a good place to be in relative to our peers, but it's hard to not see the outcomes of Stockton, California, City of Detroit, Puerto Rico for that matter. It's, Puerto Rico can't even, can't even default and, and go through a bankruptcy proceeding, and then they get whacked with a hurricane. So I'd just like the, the council to consider that, entering into the fetus' plan, putting it into the budget, committing to it, making sure that that money's set aside in the future to protect future generations and the future, long-term future of this, the city. As to why you guys might care, that's 25 years is a long time. Many of you, maybe all of you won't be around. So why would you care? Well, I would say the, the same thing. Why wouldn't you care? Why not do, why not do the right thing and have that money put aside for the future? Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council? All right, seeing none, I'll close the hearing at 7:19.
So having heard those comments this evening, we'll certainly take those documents, if they're, if they're provided, and reciprocate with the in-kind answers. I will say that you have a workforce here of 200 people that delivers high quality of services every single day. And the comment about the pension contribution by Ms. Ness, I will assure you, I've asked that same question, and we are not an outlier. And so it, while it's always, I'm always careful to come, come before you, and the, the cornerstones of our republic allow for public discourse, certainly, and welcome that, would never do anything to stifle that , I said. But it's also, I believe, our obligation to stand up and, and give those explanations, particularly when it comes to our workforce, who I know work every single day very diligently. And we're trying to attract and retain talented people to deliver those services here. So we'll respond to those, those questions and those inquiries. And I appreciate Mr. Thurston's comments, and we'll certainly take those as administration and look at the terms and conditions of the, of the loan, and love to spend some more time with him and soliciting his feedback. So with that, we're destined for a, an adoption for this particular budget in the month of October. Any other questions for me, council?
Todd, what is the, what has been our employee count over the years?
Yeah.
How, how has that count remained?
It's been pretty-
In my opinion, it's remained pretty much around 200. It's been stable.
That's correct. And we can provide that graphic over the last 10 years of where we're at with the number in our workforce. Certainly, the, the most growth has been in public safety to, as our population increases. And I will tell you, I think I mentioned in the, the work session, I'm receiving proposals for a salary compensation survey from an outside party. I have one proposal back, I have another one out yet to be submitted. We've never done that in, in my time here, nearly almost 25 years. And so that'll be helpful as a guidepost as we go ahead and build out and, and plan our salaries and our total compensation packages.
Okay. So my takeaway on that is that we've done a very good job of repurposing people and keeping the number where it, not, it's adequate for where we are, but we've seen tremendous growth in the city, and we haven't mirrored that in our employee population.
So we'll bring that, that, that graphic back to you in the, the October, we circulated prior to, but for this public meeting in October, we'll, we'll reflect that, because it's been relatively static for the last decade.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm still kind of working on a, on a list of questions and concerns, but a very simple one for us tonight. I noticed we have 34 in the line item for our promotions budget here at the council, and just wondering why we, we would even need that.
Well, one, there are many reasons why we carry a budget and, and the amount of money that we do. We have unexpected things that come up. We've had, we funded the facade improvement program, it's been shifted to us to fund, and we funded that to the tune of $15,000. So if you have some items you'd like to consider, please bring them forward, and we'll be happy to take a look and reevaluate those. But we want to support our community, and we want to promote our community, and that's sort of what those things are for. But if you feel it's not necessary to do that, I know we've supported some of the festivals here, which add life to downtown. You wanted some money for Janus last year for the, the festival here, and they were going to provide some service. And, and we're trying to raise money, and we help different, different organizations and, and help try and make our community better through those, the expenditure of those funds. So I'd be happy to discuss that at any time with you or any council members.
Just looking through just all the different departments and seeing where we're spending, like, you know, maybe nonessential, and looking how we can streamline that, because we do have some, what appears to be some extra that we might be able to look at there across the board.
And we've got another project we're looking at that may cost a substantial amount of money. And I'm still trying to figure out what we can do to make it feasible to do that, though.
Okay.
Anyone?
I'd like to make a comment, if I will. I think it's interesting to listen to public comment. We take each, each item and tidbit to heart. We'll look into these. I just want you to know, from looking my vantage point over the last probably three-plus decades, that probably to the average educated and really highly successful CPA or accountant, government finance probably just doesn't make a lot of sense. That's what I've observed. When you look at so-called fat in the budget, I'm just speaking now specifically to what I'm aware of in this city, and again, from the past, but many times, if you don't put things in the budget, you're not going to get it. What we do every day, and I've watched and observed our staff work every day, to not spend down everything. If you'll look at the record over the past few years, I think you'll find that each department is challenged to not do that, to not spend everything just because they're given that. Even from the council's budget, over the last few years, I served as the, we kind of take turns, and I served a couple of years as the council president. If you'll look, we had a budget that was, certainly was not exorbitant, okay, but we didn't use it. I mean, we just didn't. Things didn't come up. And I will remind Councilor Spoljerick last year that she asked for monies for one of her projects that was the most significant expenditure that we had. Those things come up, and when they're there, we deal with them. But I can't disagree that if you look, if the average person would look at some of these budgets, that they probably look fat. This is an introduction. We're going to get cut. And then even when, if we get approvals, we're challenged every day to be the most efficient that we can be. So that's, that's somewhat the way it is. I would challenge anybody if they think that they're the best at fixing the state of Indiana or any other state, and how they, how they're, how we are told to prepare budgets have at it, because it is not a perfect system. I'll guarantee that.
All right, thank you, Chuck. Any other comments? Very good. This will be up for adoption consideration October 9th, and we'll move on to new business. Before us, under new business, is ordinance 1730, North Point slash Aurora PUD amendment. We had a council introduction on the 25th, and tonight. So Matt Skelton, would you like to introduce this project, please?
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Aitken, and members of the council. We're excited to be able to introduce this item for this zoning amendment for Toyota Advanced Logistics Solutions. We have worked diligently to attract this group to our community. We've, this was a competitive site selection process, and these folks have stayed with us, and we are, are moving through this process. Toyota intends, if everything goes as planned, to start site work this year. So this is a, this is a very short timeline on this project. We, some of the supporting information that will be supplied for this project will, will come in between now and the public hearing and plan commission. So if there's anything that doesn't, anything appears to be missing, it's just because we're, we're receiving information, trying to stay on a pretty tight timeline for this project. Amanda Rubidoo will cover the basics of the overview of the project, and then I believe a member of the Toyota team would like to address you.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President, members of the council, my name is Amanda Rubidoo with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening for introduction is a proposal for an amendment to the North Point, also known as Aurora Plan Unit Development District. For your reference, the parcel affected by this amendment is immediately north of the Carrington Mortgage Building, just west of the new East Street extension, which will connect up to State Road 38. The PUD, the PUD amendment is to allow for the construction of a 92,000-square-foot office and warehouse building with an additional planned future expansion of approximately, approximately 115,000 square feet. This building will serve as the global headquarters for Bastian Solutions, recently acquired by Toyota Advanced Logistics Solutions. Due to the project timeline, as Matt mentioned, the PUD you have attached to the agenda is in a draft form. The department is working with the petitioner to refine those details of the PUD. We do anticipate a handful of modifications to accommodate this project. I won't go into those details, as we're expecting some changes to what you have before you, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this point. Tonight is an introduction. The proposal will follow the normal zoning process. It is scheduled for a public hearing at the Plan Commission's October 2nd meeting. The petitioner has, has scheduled a neighborhood meeting tomorrow evening here at City Hall at 7:00 PM. Greg Durham with Bastian Solutions is here on behalf of Bastian Solutions, and will be giving a short presentation. Mr. Durham is available to answer any questions, as am I, if you have any questions of staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much to the opportunity to come in and tell you a little bit about Bastian Solutions. I've been with the company for 27 years, straight out of Purdue, as an engineer. And I've been a Westfield resident for 17. So I can honestly tell you that I probably had a lot of reasoning why we want to be in Westfield. But Bastian Solutions, we were founded in 1952, and we were currently acquired by Toyota Advanced Logistics in April of this year. And it's a brand-new division for Toyota. They currently produce forklifts, and we are strong in the automation and conveyor side of the business. And with e-commerce coming as big as it is and continuing to grow, Toyota's seeing a, I guess, a flattening of the fork truck sales, because now orders are going out as eaches instead of pallets. out as eaches instead of pallets, and that's where we are strongest at, and that's one of the reasons they acquired us, and, um, that was the first acquisition for this division. And, uh, you know, we've been, uh, predominantly growing internally. When I hired in in nineteen ninety, we had nineteen people. We currently have over six hundred. We, uh, have eighteen domestic office locations, seven international office locations, and, um, have done basically business, uh, on every continent, even Antarctica, on some of the research bases. Um, you know, we feel that, uh, you know, why Westfield? We have a current operation in, in Greenfield, and, uh, what we find in that, uh, nothing against Greenfield, but it's tough for us to attract talent, um, from across the US. Uh, we do a lot of, uh, research and development, and, uh, everybody wants to be on the north side, and we feel that Westfield brings us the ability to attract good talent, plus also have the ability to attract talent that currently lives and relies, resides in Westfield. Um, you know, basically, we're, um, looking to start off with, uh, roughly fifty engineers and technicians, and by year two, um, we're looking at basically knocking down the wall at, uh, the ninety thousand and building it out to the two hundred, uh, thousand square feet, and, uh, continuing to add, uh, personnel each and every year, and, uh, start adding, looking at second shift. But predominantly, uh, we're gonna be building automation equipment, and so it's not, uh, you need technicians and people that bring, it's more skilled labor, uh, as I was mentioning to, um, Mayor Cook and our discussions and Todd, and it, it's more like what you would have in Warsaw, Indiana, with the, the, uh, all the orthopedics up there and the skilled labor, and that's really what we're looking to bring to Westfield. So, that's kind of the project. Any questions, or?
Well, Mr. Durham, I appreciate you taking a look at our community and investing in the community where you live. This is very exciting to have an international company at headquarters. We look forward to your continued success. I think you shared with me in the conversation, uh, that, uh, your company was sorta tenth, eleventh, and worldwide, and Toyota has a vision to take you and the ability to take you to number one in what you do, and it's exciting because you have some advanced technology and computer systems, and it was fascinating learning about your history and what you do. And I'm, personally, I'm very excited to welcome you into our community, and, uh, this is just the start, it's just a council introduction, but, uh, um, I, I think you've chosen well, and we're gonna make you proud, as you will us as well. Any other comments?
When will, uh, construction be expected to start?
Um, we're, uh, we wanna move dirt in, uh, in November and basically get that done so that we could start tilting walls up, uh, December fifteenth, and, um, the goal is to work through the winter, and we wanna basically be completing the, the building around April fifteenth. That gives us forty-five days to basically move in, train people, uh, you know, get the processes and procedures down, and, uh, really start shipping our first products out, um, June first. And with Toyota, you know, they have the, the TPS, the Toyota Production Systems, so everything's done very methodical, and, uh, they don't do anything quickly, so this has been a, a challenge. That's thus we've allowed forty-five days to try to get, you know, everybody trained and everything the Toyota way.
Thank you.
There, you're not anticipating manufacturing right away. Manufacturing comes in the second group, uh, or the, when you add the two hundred thousand square feet, or you?
No, the, um, we'll be manufacturing right away.
Right away.
And, um, the two hundred thousand is we're gonna start bringing on more products. Uh, the first products will be a little lower tech, and then, um, in our industry, right now, the big thing is, uh, basically goods to person, you're bringing the, the goods to the operator to do, do the picking, so it's a lot of robotics, uh, a lot of autonomous robots, and actually, we're doing a lot of development, uh, to do robotic picking and actually take the operator out, and that's, that's where we're headed, and...
Now, when you say robotic picking, you mean robotic picking of parts, or, uh, raw material, or whatever it is that you're picking?
Yes, in a, in a distribution center, so if you place an order for Puma, so you're buying tennis shoes for your grandkids, or, or whoever, and you would, uh, you know, the product would come to the robot, it uses vision, verifies it's the right size, right style, picks it up, sets it on the conveyor, goes down, and an operator, uh, verifies it, puts it in the carton, doneage, labeled, and out the door. And I can tell you in our systems, uh, that we have currently, um, if you place an order at, I can do, use puma.com, for instance, uh, from fifteen minutes, the time you click the, the submit, that order's pick packed and it's on the truck.
What's the salary range of the people you're, uh, going to hire?
Uh, most of them will probably be, uh, we, most of the people we have are, are salaried, and so you're probably into seventy to a hundred thousand on up from there.
That's good.
Cause, uh, you, uh, you have to have a lot of engineers and, uh, people with, you know, technical backgrounds, so. When it's done, we'd love to have you guys do a tour, cause I think you'd be really impressed, so.
I'm gonna look forward to that date.
I know June first, that we're gonna all be up there on my calendar here.
Yeah.
Look forward to seeing you on October second to get the process started.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, the next item under new business is ordinance seventeen dash thirty-five, also a council introduction, salary ordinance, non-elected officials. Mr. Betron.
Counsel, this is, uh, yet again, a, uh, a part of our annual process to come before you. Uh, you have this document, it is also posted online with the supporting exhibits. Uh, no real changes here, just reflects some of the, uh, positions, um, that we've programmed in, uh, for next year, and those ranges are exactly that, they're ranges, that is not indicative of, of exactly the gross salary that any given position, uh, will, um, be making. Those ranges are set, so if in the event that someone is promoted or, um, or a position perhaps eliminated through attrition, we move a person up to a different job classification. That way, we're not, uh, having to come to you with every single personnel move. Um, again, uh, to, to digress for just a moment, we will, um, once we have the findings of the salary, uh, survey or the, the, um, that work product, will come, uh, before you with any, perhaps changes as we, as we do a guidepost. So, I'm not anticipating a, any of those changes mid-year, as far as a holistic change to this ordinance, and if so, you'll certainly be, uh, advised with those, with that data from the study. So, uh, that's what this is, that's the normal routine, does have our longevity schedule in here and a summary of benefits. Um, so, but if you have any questions this evening, I'm more than happy to answer those, and, um, beyond that, I think it moves to adoption at your next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Does counsel have any questions for Mr. Betron?
I noticed the online version, um, that we have here doesn't have the highlights, uh, on it for the changes.
Well, that's a...
I do have a copy, I don't know how I got it, but I don't see it on here.
Yeah, this is a clean copy.
Okay. I don't know if all the other counselors have the highlighted copy, I just wonder...
They would be available upon request. Any other comments? Okay, we'll see this back October ninth.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, uh, under new business is ordinance seventeen dash thirty-six, the geo bond, Mr. Zager.
Um, quite honestly, can I address the next two at the same time? They're interrelated anyway.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, geo bond is a two million dollar bond, general obligation bond of the city. I believe this is the third time, John? Third time we've done this, uh, and what it basically is, is, uh, replacing our leasing program from a more traditional lease to using a general obligation bond to lower the cost of the city. Uh, it, this is a program set up by John, and, uh, I couldn't tell you how much it's saved or how much it's, uh, made it more efficient, but we have plenty of time to discuss any questions you may have on it. Uh, if you have any direct to me, if it's more mechanical, please contact Mr. Rogers. Uh, the, the seventeen thirty-seven is another, uh, additional appropriation. Again, you need a ordinance so that you can spend the funds once you adopt the ordinance and get the proceeds. Both of these will be set up for a public hearing on October ninth, with adoption possibly at that time.
Very good. We've been through this before, are there any questions at this time? We did one of these last year in sixteen. What happens to the old bond? Is it a...
They're paid off.
They're paid off within that year, or within the ensuing year?
In so many years.
Okay.
This is a rotating, rather than entering into continual leases and financing charges for employees, we just have a geo bond, and I just have to take my rights. You got that right, John?
So, the payoffs within a year, then, basically?
Yeah.
Do we have any carryover of, of the sixteen bond into seventeen and eighteen, or?
They're much like new states.
Okay. We're not doubling that. All right, anyone else? All right. Uh, the last item on our agenda under new business is ordinance seventeen thirty-eight, amending ordinance fifteen thirty-nine regarding ambulance fees. Mr. Zager?
Ordinance fifteen thirty-nine is an ordinance we adopted allowing for emergency medical transportation fees to be charged. Traditionally, we try to, uh, mirror the fees that are approved by Medicare Medicaid folks, so that we can be reimbursed. This is, uh, an ordinance to increase those amounts and hopefully, uh, adopt within this ordinance the ability to continue to renew it without adopting contin- more ordinances in the future. Uh, currently, I have it, I believe, delegated to the Board of Public Works to just go through one of their monthly meetings to recognize there's been an increase by the Medicare Medicaid folks and have that reflected in the fees that are going to be charged. Uh, but I'm not sure we're married to that yet, and I'm available to answer any questions, and so, of course, is the chief.
Okay. This will be back for adoption consideration, any questions? Hearing none. Uh, at this time, residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Does anybody like to address council? Uh, moving on, uh, city council comments, Mr. Hoover, any updates from APC?
I can, I'll be very brief. We did not meet last week, APC did not meet, so there is no update.
Okay. Uh, any other city council comments? Okay, um, just two events coming up, uh, Westfield Youth Assistance this Saturday, we'll have a, a fall festival out at the Mariana Bank, I believe, and then the Grand Junction Derby is coming up, so anybody interested in, in, uh, joining the fun and maybe enrolling a, uh, Derby car can do so through our parks director and parks department. Um, that's all, I, we had some exciting events, Mayor, so I guess I'll turn it over to you to talk about all that's been going on.
Has been and will be.
Busy week.
Yeah, there has been a lot, so bear with me here real quick. First of all, uh, thank you for passing the Bastion project on. Um, the, the importance of this project is, uh, is, is difficult to, uh, describe. It is the first project in our formerly Aurora, now North Point, uh, industrial area. Um, Mr. Durham chose to word, use the words Toyota, who is their new owner. We don't take those, that term lightly. Uh, if you heard the words right out of his mouth, what he said was, the reason we're coming to Westfield is because of its high quality of life and the ability to attract a workforce. That speaks to the quality of the schools, Grand Park, our trails, the quality of our employees, which we must take good care of, and this international company is locating a high-tech, advanced manufacturing facility here in Westfield because of what Westfield is. And I can't tell you how refreshing that is to hear. Thank you for passing that on. Okay, what has been and what will be. Uh, Westfield Boulevard Extension, that has, we've talked about for many, many years, part of the funding from the, uh, utility sale, um, is open, adjacent there to, uh, under thirty-one and over to Target. Uh, this Wednesday at eleven AM, also with some of that funding, the new ditch road extension from thirty-two North will open, and we can close down that terrible, terrible Casey Road and thirty-two intersection very shortly, won't we Phil? Yes, thank you. Um, be with us Wednesday, eleven AM. I think we're gonna have some new scissors, right Murphy? Cutting the scissors in Westfield Boulevard with hedge trimmers was not exactly very mayor oral, is that right? Okay.
We need a Bastion conveyor system to move those.
That was, yeah. Maybe we could do that robotically, Murphy? Hey, okay, we can do that, okay. Another one coming up, nine twenty-eight, uh, join us for the ribbon cutting. Got it? Okay. With Methodist Sports Medicine, one of our, uh, stakeholders out of Grand Park, uh, have several thou- a couple thousand square feet out there, where they're offering not only sports training, but a full, uh, retail of, uh, physical therapy, uh, X-ray equipment and so on. They're a business partner of ours out there, because they're also now in the business of providing, uh, sports medicine facilities for all of our tournaments that come out to, uh, Grand Park. Uh, October seventh, the Grand Junction Derby will be downtown. If you have not seen the video with our own Phil Sondling and Travis, was it Travis? On the other one? Check out the website, you gotta see that video. I mean, it, it is, it is absolutely fantastic. So, uh, also, let's see, we just finished, and help me with the, it was the Home and Patio Show, what?
Suburban Indy.
Suburban Indy, a huge success out of Grand Park, one of our first big trade shows, although we had the, uh, the...
Whale of a Sail.
Whale of a Sail, and that's...
Coming back.
And that's coming back?
End of this week.
End of this week? So, uh, I went through that this weekend, uh, it was, it was beautiful. Very dangerous. You do not take your wife through that show and also Homearama in the same week, which is still going on for what, the third time in four years? For all of Metro Indy is going on in Westfield, and will be in Westfield also next year. But my wife constantly reminds me, we live in an eleven-year-old house and it is now time to remodel everything. Enter with caution. Uh, I wanna give a check up here. Today I had the privilege of accepting from the governor, uh, a check for our Westfield streets, uh, for six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This was part of, uh, last year's legislative, uh, road funding program. Phil Sondling did one heck of a job. This is a much more competitive process. Last year, uh, we kinda won because there weren't that many prepared to go, but we won. This year is much more competitive. I think they had over four hundred, um, applications, and we came out with a very large amount because of the various, you gotta have, uh, this plan and you gotta have that plan, and Phil understands all that stuff, and, uh, thanks a lot. One other thing, um, I guess we haven't really talked since last time, but a little something for all of you. Just... Mr. Spoljeric, there you go. We have a little feeling. Please, with our treasures off, there you go, our city attorney. And I got two left, so here we go.
I don't think so.
You know, I guess it's kind of a, I work out now with the Indianapolis Colts signing a ten-year agreement to visit us for about three weeks every year. And that was a discussion that went on literally for two years. And I have a great deal of gratitude, you know, our chief negotiator, Todd Betron over here, who can stand up tall with that bald head, throw the crown, and tell the Colts, "No, we're not gonna agree to that." And it happened a lot. Also, I gotta tell you, the staff out at Grand Park, William Knox, William worked on this ever since he came in, almost daily through the final negotiations, I know with Jeff Brown. Jeff Brown loves the Colts camp, and he needs this, and he needs that, and he needs that. And we have to learn that he says, "No, we can't do it." And there are a lot of things they ask for, and no, we can't do. Todd has much more patience than I do on a lot of those items. And it was an experience for all of us to be a great group, great group, but tough negotiators in the workplace. And I think that you'll see that the ideas that we, we do accomplish and the locker room that we're gonna put in is something that is already brought in. We're already planning on doing it. It will be something that we can use many, many other weeks of the year that we can actually charge for. But to have their presence, I just met up with the example with the indot commissioner this morning. The first thing he said is, "I suppose you're gonna want signs out on US thirty-one with the Colts." And I said, "Yeah, why don't you mention it?" He said, "Okay, we'll be able to do it." It's gonna be a great, not only for the city, for Hamilton County, and literally for all of us in the community. And I know that, I have to know Carly Persson pretty well through this. And she's a, she's a really charming lady, and she cares. She said, what'd she say at one point, Todd, we talked about the restrooms we have out there, and she said something about, "Well, maybe we have some, we need to have some portal less because I don't wanna seem like we're so popular." So, I don't know if we're gonna do that now, but she's very, she really wants to market to younger people within Indiana, and maybe around half of Canada for their prices and all. She and the new president, the Val, are very much into marketing. And that is why they chose Grand Park. Its location, the Ford River facility. In her opening remarks, she said she's received a lot of comments across the I T L information. They're getting it happening in places like this. Really, Todd, thanks for all your hard work, counsel. Thanks for your support, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All those, do I have a motion?
Sure.
Do I have a second? A second. All those in favor of adjuring signify by saying aye. Aye. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
Saw that yawn, and it made me yawn.